She's for the Gary Oaks.
Yeah, especially for the tree one.
Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. It is the evening of April 16th at 6:00 PM and I'd like to call our meeting to order. I'd like to invite you to stand and join us in an invocation tonight led by Pastor David Parker, Oak Harbor First United Methodist Church, and following that I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Parker?
Thank you Mayor, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we gather this night to oversee and administrate the affairs of this grand city, so we come to bless our elected council members and all of the support staff at the City Hall as they undertake the management, growth, and guidance of our Oak Harbor community. So God grant them wisdom and discernment so that all of their deliberations and final decisions can affect every form of good for our community. We do pray for the welfare and advancement of our government, of our business, schools, families, first responders, churches, civic groups, and our NAS Woodby family. Lord, we pray for the young and old, the rich and poor, we pray that you will prosper a work that will benefit all and gather us into a united community. And so look down upon us with favor tonight through Jesus Christ our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Parker, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think we have a couple of council members that won't be with us tonight, Councilor Wassinger and Councilor Wiener, so I would entertain a motion to excuse them, yes Mayor Protim.
I move that we excuse Councilman Wassinger and Councilman Wiener, please.
Okay, motion and second to excuse Councilor Wassinger and Councilor Wiener, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, okay. Passed unanimously, we will move on to our agenda. We have an agenda with several items of business and wondering if anybody's got any idea to change, if not, the agenda will be approved as presented and we will move on to section number two, and we have two proclamations tonight. It's been awhile since we've had proclamations and I'm happy to introduce our first presenter for Arbor Day proclamation presented by Mayor Protim, Beth Muns.
Thank you. Mr. Niner, would you join me or anyone else in voting for Arbor Day?
Excited to vote.
Hello. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday is called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, provide life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And trees are renewable resources giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuels for our fire, and beautify our community. And trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, we Mayor Robert Severns and the council members of the City of Oak Harbor do by proclaim April 10th, 2019, as Arbor Day. In the City of Oak Harbor, we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed, the 16th day of April, 2019, Robert Severns, Mayor. And guess what, I found this little bitty tree that needs some home for you. I couldn't plant it, but I found one that...
I thought it was plastic for a second.
No, it's not, it's live, it's real.
Wow, neat, thank you.
It's supposed to be for good luck, so there you go.
Appreciate it.
And here, I'll give this to you.
Okay. Put this off to the side here.
Thank you very much for all you do with the Parks Department and for you and the Gary Oak Society. Oh, I can't go there.
Hank, want to say a few words?
Yes, so this year for Arbor Day, we've got the Oak Harbor Garden Club, they're donating six Sunset Maples, and three of the Sunset Maples are going in by the Autumn Leaf Sculpture along with other plantings that we're going to be working on in the next month. And then three other of the Sunset Maples are going down with, by Bailey's Playground area at Windjammer Park. Laura and I also met with about fifty, sixty Home Connection students on April 11th at Smith Park, and we spent some time talking to them about the Gary Oaks and the Gary Oak ecosystem, and got them into, involved in a project where they're going to go back and write some poems and do some sketches of what they learned or what they think of the Gary Oaks, and then we're going to be looking at them and doing some kind of a display at Smith Park. And then the, also the Gary Oak Society has got an event scheduled for Arbor Day, and Laura Renninger is here with, she's the president of the Gary Oak Society, she's going to talk about what they've got going on with Arbor Day.
Agreed.
Thank you Hank. Good evening Mayor Severns, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I thought it would be fun to keep this announcement lighthearted, so I brought along a special guest for you to meet before I share any further. Please give a warm Arbor Day welcome to Gary, our new society mini mascot.
Thank you.
Yay. Gary is made completely of Oak Harbor acorn and oak tree parts, except for his neck scarf. And council, in your packet you have a close-up picture of him. You can follow Gary's activities around Oak Harbor on our Facebook page. To celebrate Arbor Day, Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society has partnered with Woodby Island Rocks, a local nonprofit. The day before Arbor Day, on Friday, April 27th, rocks like this one, painted by talented artists featuring nature scenes and Gary Oaks, will be hidden along our walking tour route, our Gary Oak walking tour route. So this is an example, and this one is painted with an oak tree at sunset along the water, it's really cool. There will be one or two rocks per tree for people to discover. Please note, this will exclude tree number 12 at Windjammer Park because it's locked up, and then tree number nine, which is now locked up behind the police department. This event will serve to highlight our beautiful native oak trees and provide a fun family activity. Like all Woodby Island Rocks, once a rock is found, the option is to keep it yourself or hide it again for someone else to find. If you do find one, please take a quick minute to snap a picture and post it to Woodby Island Rocks Facebook page. The oak tree tour route can be found on our website, or you can pick one up at the Chamber of Commerce. Last month, our group partnered with teachers at Broadview Elementary to provide classroom education for approximately sixty-five students to learn all about Gary Oaks. This was followed by assistance in planting the new native garden at Broadview, and included a Gary Oak tree seedling donated by our group. This tree joins three planted last spring by us and the Broadview students. On April 20th, we are partnering with Oak Harbor Main Street Association for the Easter Egg Hunt and Gary Oak Education Event in Smith Park from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. Our volunteers will have an informational table and give away coloring sheets and little mini color crayon packs for the kids, and at that time, we will be unveiling a draft of the new mural that will be painted along the side of the Christ the King building located along East Pioneer Way later this year. The mural depicting a Gary Oak meadow at sunset will direct the public to Smith Park. The mural will be partially funded by Main Street Association, Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society, and grants provided by Island Thrift and Walmart. In May, there will be a month-long exhibit at the Oak Harbor Library featuring Gary Oak-related textile and collage art for the public to enjoy. In June, we are thrilled to be able to fund a scholarship for an Oak Harbor High School qualifying senior. And lastly, an interpretive sign designed by Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society will soon be installed at the Native Garden Pocket Park located at the post office, which will explain about native plants and the connection to Gary Oaks. So, we are very excited about these happenings and we thank all our partners who help us make good things happen in our community. Thank you.
Thank you Laura, and I would next like to introduce our council member Tara Heisen to present the Earth Day proclamation, and bring Hank back up.
Hank, you're not getting out of here that easy. Proclamation, whereas April 22nd, 2019, is the forty-ninth anniversary of Earth Day, founded by Gaylord Nelson, then a US Senator from Wisconsin, and the first Earth Day led to the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency and the passage of the Water and Endangered Species Act, and Earth Day is now celebrated by millions of people worldwide. And a natural environment is the foundation of a healthy society and robust economy. There are currently methods and technology available to help us live in harmony with our environment. And human activities around the globe are causing environmental damage that threatens human health and our planet's ability to sustain a diverse community of life. And there are economic, environmental, and social reasons for state and local governments to initiate energy efficiency and renewable energy practices, and Earth Day offers citizens an unprecedented opportunity to commit to building a healthy planet and flourishing communities. Now therefore, we, Mayor Robert Severns and the council members of the City of Oak Harbor do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2019, as Earth Day in the City of Oak Harbor, and we urge all citizens, businesses, and institutions to celebrate this special observance. Signed, the 16th day of April, 2019, Robert Severns, Mayor.
Thank you. It's hard to tell Gary if he's coming.
So we have a few events going on for Earth Day, there's probably more going on that I'm not aware of, but as you probably know, many of our parks are adopted by groups within the community and Navy squadrons, and so a number of these groups will be doing some Earth Day cleanups in the parks they've adopted. We've also got the GEO Cashing Group here in Oak Harbor doing a cleanup on April 27th, and if you want to get information on that, go to GEOcashing.com. They've got some info in there, I'm not quite sure how they're going to work it, maybe they're going to turn it into some kind of event where they're looking for GEO cashing while they're doing litter control, so, and that's from 10 to 12 on April 27th, so if you're curious, go to the website and check it out. All right, thank you.
Thank you Hank, and thanks again to Councilor Heisen and Mayor Protim for those presentations. That concludes Section 2A, we'll move on to Section 2B, Honors and Recognitions, and start with, I think our Police Chief Dresker is with us now for an oath of office for Police Officer Scott Johnson. Chief?
Thank you Mayor, council members. Pardon me if my voice is a little hoarse today. Before I call Scott Johnson up, I just want to kind of bring attention to the bands that I think we're all wearing today in recognition or in memorial to the deputy who was recently shot and killed, which of course just reminds me how difficult a job it is for law enforcement officers, and how truly honored and blessed we are to have people entering this profession and starting their career, knowing the difficulties, but people who want to do service to the community and give back. So with that in mind, I have the distinct honor and privilege to introduce you to Officer Scott Johnson. Scott, if you'll join me up here please. So, come on over here Scott. So what we're going to do is, just a little bit of bio on Scott. Scott served in the Navy, was it six years Scott?
Four years.
Four years, and then he did civilian service up here for security for the base for a couple years. And we were lucky enough to hire him out of that position. When we interviewed and did the process with him, it was pretty clear to us, there was no doubt in our mind that he would be a good officer for us. He was hired, he just completed five and a half months of training at the Criminal Justice Training Commission, certified as a law enforcement officer within Washington State. He's currently riding with our field training officers, they do that for about two and a half months before they're out on their own, and then they're expert in everything. So, Scott's a pleasure to have with us, very nice, very respectful, and very dedicated to the job from what I can see at this point in time, so we're very happy to have him. So I'm going to swear Scott in, I'm going to do it slowly because I never get these right, we're going to try our best, and I'm glad I'm not the only one hot in here, I see other people fanning themselves, I thought it was just me. So we'll swear him in, and then I'm going to let his wife pin on his badge for him here, and then we'll take a break if you guys want to, to say hello to him. So Scott, if you'll turn and face me. So I state your name.
I, Scott Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of Washington State.
The laws and Constitution of United, Washington, Washington State.
And the ordinances of the City of Oak Harbor.
And the ordinances of the City of Oak Harbor.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
For the Oak Harbor Police Department.
For the Oak Harbor Police Department.
And the City of Oak Harbor, Washington.
And the City of Oak Harbor, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law and ordinance.
As such duties are prescribed by law and ordinance.
And I further swear.
And I further swear.
That I shall diligently and faithfully.
That I shall diligently and faithfully.
Carry out the lawful directives.
Carry out lawful directives.
Of the duly constituted authorities.
Of the duly constituted authorities.
For the City of Oak Harbor.
For the City of Oak Harbor.
And that I shall abide by.
And that I shall abide by.
Conduct rules.
Conduct rules.
Of the law enforcement code of ethics.
Of the law enforcement code of ethics.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Nice job.
Thank you.
So I'm going to, I forgot to say too, and Scott, I'm going to let him introduce his wife, Scott's parents weren't able to be here tonight, I talked to his dad and mom at the graduation ceremony for Scott, and just as a point of fact, his dad was your uncle or the great grandfather?
My dad and then my dad's father.
His dad retired from thirty years of Sacramento PD, and then his grandfather also retired from Sacramento PD, I think, so law enforcement runs in his blood. Okay, if you want to introduce your wife and then have her come forward.
Everyone, this is my wife Chelsea. Hey, one's birthday.
She's an expert, she did it once already. You want up there for Patrick? Just hold it like this.
Meg, come forward.
Come on forward Meg.
Come on Meg.
And somebody turn that heat down.
Okay, and so I give to you our newest officer, we're extremely happy and we're going to get him off FTO status so he can be out on his own and handle all the calls. And by the way, we had, I think, did some of our guys get back, we had some other guys coming, they ended up running and helping the county with two guys that ran from them. I think they arrested one on a warrant, I think maybe you guys are here, but busy times, so.
So we'll take about a three-minute break here and welcome Scott aboard.
Everybody but Scott.
Really impressed with your left hand.
I would not be able to do that.
If I'm close enough and at the right angle, I can write you a few things, but for a while, any...
Call the meeting back to order, and we will move on to the second part of Section 2B, which is Oak Harbor Police Department Presentation of New Badges and Patches. Back to Chief Dresker.
So two quick things before I start, I was prepping in the room in here, I noted that the peep displays are in there, and I don't know how many people are up here today, so I think it would probably not be fair for me to tell people to vote for the best one, the OHPD one. So I won't, I won't present that up here or say that.
Yeah, sure.
Just not going to do it. I do want to thank Captain Arnie who is here from the US Navy, I know he had something else going tonight, I believe he directed a subordinate to do that, and I'll probably get in trouble for that, so we won't go any further on that, but appreciate him being here, and then I also appreciate all the members of the department who showed up for this. Thank you everybody for being here, and everybody else, cab, council members, everybody. So, what are we here today, what are we doing? So, we've had our department, you guys, everybody, the city, has had a department badge and patch for about thirty years or more, over thirty. So it's been around for a long time, in fact, it's got, I think that's supposed to be an A6 on there, which has been around for a while. We currently still have the old badge, which is, for lack of a better word, kind of a generic badge that a lot of departments were wearing once upon a time. I think there's due pride in this badge, or in this patch, but as we've worked toward progressing our department and how we want to move forward and everything, we've decided that this is an appropriate time to swap that patch, as some departments do once in a while, and then also a new badge. And before I get started with my quick little speech here, I want to thank, we had input from officers and department members, I do want to special thank to Sergeant Tony Sloak, who coordinated with the people working with us on this to get a lot of details worked out, so I appreciate that. I think he's here somewhere, I don't know where he disappeared to. Okay. So, I'm just going to kind of get into this with the introduction. The Oak Harbor Police Department is moving progressively forward in organizational capabilities, and we are changing the design on our badges and shoulder patches. While changes like this should be considered carefully, our organization believes this is a good change for us at this time. Our previous design has served us well for the past thirty or so years, and we look forward to our new design lasting just as long. As we consider what our new patch and badge should look like, it didn't take long for us to come to some conclusions. I'm going to ask the two captains to flip over the boards which show our designs.
I'm just laughing at that old comparison.
So you'll see the patch which is on the left and the badge which is on the right, and you'll see that we're sporting, we were able to get some patches in and put them on some of our uniforms. So these are our new designs. So I'm going to read the next as you're looking at that. The City of Oak Harbor and the Oak Harbor Police Department take great pride in our relationship with the Naval Air Station Woodby Island, NASWY, and the men and women who are stationed here in service to our country. The men and women working for the Oak Harbor Police Department and those serving our nation as part of Naval Air Station Woodby Island essentially share common goals and a purpose of existence as organizations. For the Navy, part of their mission statement indicates they maintain, train, and equip with the intent of deterring aggression and maintaining freedom. The Oak Harbor Police Department's mission statement is dedicated to community safety and service, which clearly indicates our goal of keeping our community safe. These organizations exist to provide services to prevent problems from occurring, and if or when problems do occur, to be prepared to mitigate those problems as best we can. It takes dedicated men and women who endure significant training and many hardships to fulfill these goals. Additionally, it requires tremendous amounts of support from families, communities, and our governmental entities to effectively perform our roles within society. I believe our Police Department and the Naval Air Station Woodby Island enjoy this type of support within our Oak Harbor community. On December 8th, 1941, survey crews started work on what would become On December eighth, nineteen forty-one, survey crews started work on what would become Alt Field. The nation was at war and work expanded rapidly with support from the small community and the nation. Since then, the Navy presence has grown around and within this community. The city of O'Carver, Whidby Island, and the Naval Air Station Whidby Island have developed and prospered in a symbiotic and cooperative relationship. Our community understands this relationship and that even in peace, there is need for a strong and supportive Navy and police department. O'Carver PD and Naval Air Station Whidby Island enjoy great community support and understanding for the mission and services our organizations provide. O'Carver Police Department and Naval Air Station Whidby Island communicate and cooperate in providing training and information between organizations, and when appropriate, towards our real-world missions. The patch and badge design we chose clearly indicates an appreciation and recognition of the longstanding and interdependent relationship between the city of O'Carver and the US Navy, specifically Naval Air Station Whidby Island. Additionally, the design recognizes an appreciation of the beauty of Whidby Island and its attraction as a location for tourism, recreation, and recognition as a family-friendly environment. In looking closely at the patch, you'll note a Gary Oak tree situated along the shore under the bridge. The past two patches of O'Carver Police Department has also had this oak tree, and our previous one also had the Navy jet on there. And the department wanted to keep this symbol as part of the design in recognition of this special tree and its uniqueness to the city of O'Carver. Albert Einstein said, "Only a life," pardon me, "only a life lived in service to others is worth living." At times, it can be difficult to comprehend the enormity of the commitments made by those serving within these organizations, but they should take pride in what they do and the benefits they provide our community and our nation as a result of their sacrifices and service. Incidentally, I just saw an email where I think O'Carver Naval Air Station Whidby Island is considered the eighth safest location in the nation for naval, for military bases. If I could have Captain Arnie come forward, please? So we've got a plaque here to present to Captain Arnie, and we appreciate your service, we appreciate the service of the men and women at the Naval Air Station, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then I think Captain Arnie, if you'd like to see something, I'm gonna let the mic.
Thanks, Chief Dressger, I appreciate that, and thanks to the mayor and the city council and everybody here. Really appreciate the partnership that we have with the police department here in O'Carver in particular. I did wanna give you something in return, so this is my personal coin that I finally got minted, I've been in this for about seven or eight months now, and it took me a little thinking to figure out what I really wanted on this, and so on the one side I've got little kinda parts of my own Navy career, and then on the other side, I've got the Whidby Island emblem. But on my side, I thought about all the different things that have impacted me throughout my career, and I came up with one phrase that I use frequently, and that's "serve proudly." And so certainly, in the Navy, you know, I serve proudly, and I know that our police officers do every day and night out there, just as we do out there all around the world, they're out there all around the community making sure that we're safe, and I really appreciate that. But also, we don't just serve proudly in those ways, we serve our communities, being members of Little League teams and other organizations throughout the community, and that's what really keeps this community going. And I've really been struck in my short time here, what a wonderful community this is, and it's because of all those organizations and because of the security that the police force provides that we can operate under, that I really appreciate this recognition and this partnership that we have between O'Carver and NASWhidby Island, so thank you.
Thank you very much. So, again, that's a very obvious symbol on our patch, along with our environment, you know, we've chosen to put the American flag on there, we're very proud of what we do for our community and the country, just as the Navy should be. The staff at the O'Carver Police Department appreciates the support we receive from our mayor and council members as we dedicate ourselves to providing professional police services to our community, and, you know, I'd like to actually call the mayor forward, I actually have a plaque to provide to the mayor, too. And I'm gonna read this just real quick, which is similar to what was on Captain Arnie's. So Mayor, this is presented to Robert Severns, Mayor of the city of O'Carver, Washington. The new design for the O'Carver Police Department patch and badge recognizes the longstanding and independent relationship between the O'Carver and Naval Air Station Whidby Island. The design also recognizes the beauty of Whidby Island and its attraction as a location for tourism, recreation, and a family-friendly environment. Also depicted is the Gary Oak tree in recognition of the unique tree and the inspiration for the city's name. Staff at the O'Carver Police Department appreciates the support we receive from the mayor and council members as we dedicate ourselves to providing professional police services to our community, presented by Chief Kevin Dressger on behalf of the men and women at the O'Carver Police Department on today's date. Mayor?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I'll just echo the partnership that we have with the captain, and thank you very much, and I will, maybe next year I'll have a coin, I just don't have one this year, but then I'll share this with council, at least pass it around, so.
Thank you. And they'll actually have something of their own, so as plank holders, because I think it'll be thirty years before we change the patch again, I don't think I'll be around, but as plank holders in this patch, and then thirty years from now, some of the other council members can get it, we have one of these to give these council members, which actually contains our patch, and then just write it up kinda similar to what the mayor had there. You got. That's all right, yeah. We'll be done in a minute. And that's our presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks to all of you from the police department, thank you for everything you do, always, day and night, can't tell you how much we appreciate you. It's nice to live in one of the safest communities, and it's because of the work, the hard work that you do. Thank you so much. Okay, we will move on now to Section Three on the agenda, which is the Citizen Comment Period. Citizens at this time may comment on subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are properly recorded, please state your name clearly into the microphone, please also limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. So, Citizen Comment Period at this time. I see Chief Merrill coming. But he's not speaking, okay. Great, okay, good.
Hello, my name is Pam Bishop, and I'm not completely prepared to do this, but I found out at the last minute about this meeting. I live at the Wagon Wheel Mobile Home Park, and I just want to share with you a little about what's going on there. I know that you are aware of the water issues there. I guess really what I wanna do is plea, provide a plea to do something quicker, sooner than later. Our water issues have been affecting all of our daily lives. When you get in the shower and you don't know if it's going to continue long enough to rinse your hair out, or if you're going to get one before you go to work, it's a very, makes it very stressful. And on top of that, now we're worried that we're going to have to move, and there's no place to move in this city. So, I really just want to say that it seems that there's a minor code change, minor to us, code change, that needs to happen, even if it's just temporarily, and I would just ask that you do, and I know part of it's at the county level, but the code seems to be with the city. I don't pretend to understand all of it, I just know that I want water to come out of my faucets when I turn it on, that's all.
Thank you.
So please, please consider whatever it takes, let us know what we need to do, if there's something we need to do that can help the process.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Jennifer, I live in sixteen in Wagon Wheel. I take care of a seventy-six-year-old man who can barely breathe, he's about to die. I help with another elderly person in the park, she can't walk, bathe herself, eat, anything. I'm disabled myself. Think of us as people, all we need is twelve inches, a pipe, from the church to Al's property, that's all we need. I just want you to consider us as people. We need water, we need to bathe. Look at my clothes, for gosh sakes. We've never been able to drink the water there, that's normal, I have my jugs. I wanna wash him, I wanna wash her. Just think of us as people, give us that twelve inches, that's all I ask, twelve inches. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I do have a list here of a couple more names that I, Mr. Joe Coomer?
Good evening. My name is Joe Coomer, I live at twenty-nine twenty North Hallow Road in Wagon Wheel Mobile Home Park. I would like to address this body about the water shortage there. I contend on what happened, we have a dry well, okay, and I contend what has happened is this aquifer, they're pumping like seventeen thousand gallons of water a day out of there, and what has happened is a huge doughnut, about seventy, eighty feet wide in diameter, that enters this well and stops, and it's, the aquifer is still there, I'm serious, and what they've done is drill, a new well is twenty-five feet from it, and so they're digging into the dry well. This is an emergency, guys, and I feel you should act as emergency. Get a two-inch line from somewhere and get us water, and damn the torpedoes, do it, do it, do it now. The second subject I wanna talk to you about is replacement of the deception pass bridge. I sent you a memo a couple, a month ago requesting a meeting for us, you didn't, you never responded. I left a message on your phones, you didn't respond. When you don't respect citizens, how can nature respect you? I thought this was pretty poor. But let's go through the design concept, okay? My design calls for replacing deception pass bridge with a four-lane suspension bridge, okay? It is not a catenary design, but one like the Oakland Bridge with the back-to-back figure port with the lines down. We have, let me mention briefly what happens if that bridge goes down catastrophically. We have, one of the things, there's a water line under there, we're looking at at least two years without a bridge. So my design is calls for building the towers both at night, the roadway is open during the day, and one late at night, and when the towers are all finished, we take the prefabricated decking, and we position four cranes in there to lift every deck up, the deck is prefabricated, okay? So as you lift the decks up and so forth, you secure them to the old decks, and the key of it is, my design calls for a piston, hydraulic piston system that lifts the new deck off the old bridge. When everything is clear and so forth, the old bridge is dynamited out of the way, and then you lower the new bridge deck onto the present design system, and the key is, the roadway will not be closed more than a week, that is huge. The value per day, there are twenty thousand vehicles a day travel across that bridge, that's what they estimate. If we assign a ten-dollar value to each bridge, each vehicle, that's two hundred thousand dollars a day. Over two years, that's a hundred and forty-something million dollars. So I would hope you folks would endorse this design concept, I gave you a memo, and I hope you read it, but again, I'd like to have a meeting sometime to discuss other topics right quick. One of them is design structures to be earthquake proof, one subject is design a flood control plant endorsement for the United States that eliminates all flooding, and the other concept is a change from fighting forest fires with a forest service to the military, and they are able to put out all fires in the same day they're started. I would like to have time to discuss that with you in private, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coomer.
Good evening, Mayor Severns, members of the city council. We are entering the longer days of the year, and the sports complex over there across from my office on Bay Shore at City Beach Park is back in activity, a lot of kids there in the afternoons and on weekends, and we have a lot of traffic along that road also on Bay Shore as it heads back out of town. I would like to remind everybody that that's, that they need to watch out for the kids, the nearest crosswalk in that area is down next to the transit station, the crosswalk that used to be in front of my office along City Beach Street across Bay Shore over towards the ball fields is basically no longer visible, and there's nowhere for it to go anyway because that sidewalk and road has been chopped up in preparation for reconstructing City Beach Street. I don't know if the city has anything that they can do temporarily to increase safety along there, but I know that I was out trying to get out of my office yesterday, and traffic's coming by very rapidly, and there's kids trying to run across the street because there's no crosswalks anywhere, and, you know, we have this problem every year along this time of the year. It's particularly bad now because City Beach Street doesn't have any parking along it because it's closed, so if there's anything the city can do for the next few months until the Little League is finished up, I would appreciate them looking at it. I'm also the president of the Waterside Homeowners Association, which is the condominiums that overlook the ball fields. We've been asking for many years for a crosswalk that would run from the end of the trail there along the ball fields and over towards Hall or Molly Park, I think that needs to be readdressed, needs to be looked at again because this is, the problem is not gonna be going away anytime soon. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Hal. Okay, anyone else for Citizen Comment?
My name's Alan Moore, I also am a resident of the Wagon Wheel Mobile Home Park. I've been a resident there, it'll be twenty-one years in June, and I have witnessed that place going from a very dodgy place to a much nicer place to live, and what I'm wanting to say is, the trailer that I live in, when I bought it, was, you could still move it out of the park. Well, now it's old enough that it's considered too old, you can't put wheels on it, you can't move it, it must be destroyed in place, so that is how it impacts me. My wife and I are both disabled veterans, live on pension from the VA, and there are, as Jennifer said, she helps a couple of older gentlemen that live in the park, there are a lot of older people, elderly people that have, live on fixed social security incomes and stuff like that, that have no other resource than that park. Right now, I spend, I own my trailer, so I spend, well, three hundred and ninety dollars a month on lot rent. There's no place in the city of O'Carver where I could find an apartment, or a home, or anything for that kind of money. So, all we're asking is to expedite a temporary solution until a permanent solution can be found, and that's all we're asking. Thank you very much.
Okay, Citizen Comments, any more? Any others? Thank you for those, and seeing none, then we'll move on to Section Number Four of our agenda, which is our Consent Ag- agenda, which is our consent agenda. And I see that we have some of our appointees here in with us tonight. So before we discuss the consent agenda, I'd like to introduce Tony Bates, James Tony Bates, who is joining our planning commission. Tony, welcome. I know that Les McCormick is joining or being reappointed to our police community advisory board. Les, nice to see you here. Thank you for coming. And I don't... Is Bob Olson here? Okay, then I think I've... Now, all we need to do is ask if there's any questions about the consent agenda. And if there's none, it'll be approved as presented. And again, thank you for your efforts and your time and your willingness to serve. We much appreciate that. Thank you. Okay? We will move on to the mayor's comments. And first off, I would like to talk about a selection from one of our students, Oak Harbor Elementary student selected for 2019 AAA School Safety Patrol Hall of Fame. In recognition of his dedication to safety, community stewardship, and leadership, local elementary student Andrew Stock from Oak Harbor Intermediate School was recently chosen to be inducted into the 2019 AAA School Safety Patrol Hall of Fame. He will be one of ten patrollers honored during a special awards ceremony held before a Seattle Mariners game on Friday, April twenty-sixth at T-Mobile Park. As a longstanding tradition, AAA Washington and a panel of judges from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and the Washington Traffic Safety Commission select top patrollers from schools across Washington each year and honor their accomplishments through induction in the AAA School Safety Patrol Hall of Fame. Patrollers are evaluated and judged on their commitment to traffic safety, citizenship, leadership skills, and contributions to school safety patrol programs. Nominations require input from both the patroller and their advisor, including responses to a series of essay questions. Stock impressed the judges with the traffic awareness he has developed, which prompted him to quickly clear students through his crosswalk to avoid an accelerating truck. So congratulations to Andrew Stock from the Oak Harbor Intermediate School. And that concludes my remarks. So we'll move to council. Councilor Hyzen?
Thank you, Mayor. And while we still have some of the citizens that spoke here, can you speak to the wagon wheel water crisis? I know... I realize that that's not in our jurisdiction. It's not in city limits, but I do know that we are very much aware of the issue and looking to see what we can do. So I don't know if you or the city attorney or somebody can give us a brief on what's going on?
Yeah, in fact, I'll ask Blaine, our city administrator.
I'll cover that under my comments.
Okay, you'll cover that later? Okay, so stick around for a few minutes. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, Mayor Protem?
As I get out and about again, I happen to run into the salon, the hyfe on Midway Boulevard. And the reason I think it's so interesting is it is a green salon. It's a green business. They just received an award for one year of recycling every hair that is cut off somebody's hair, male or female. They recycle it and all the bleach and dyes or any of the... For perms and stuff, all of that stuff is recyclable. So none of it goes down the drain into our sewer or into the stormwater. And I think that's quite a feat. It's a very small salon, but I would like to say kudos to that business, and maybe we'll have some others be able to join them. So I think that's pretty neat.
Yes, Councilor Ombert?
I appreciate that comment, but...
Yes, yes, right. You'll be using it.
Can you help me out? That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll turn it to the city administrator.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start off regarding the Wagon Wheel Mobile Home Park. The staff has been doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work in making a solution. In fact, two weeks ago, we submitted a proposal for a temporary solution to the county, and we continue to negotiate with them. We're meeting weekly with representatives from the county, representatives from the Mobile Home Park, and representatives from the State Department of Health and that solution. And we'll continue, and we're hopeful that we can get a really quick solution with the county. But it's certainly outside our city limits and outside our urban growth area, and GMA has some restrictions on us to do it, to extend water. So even though logistically it may be a little issue, there's some major issues with the law, and it's not necessarily the state law... The city law, it's the state law that we're dealing with. But certainly, we'll work with the county and the state and the property owners of that Mobile Home Park to come to a agreeable solution. So we're committing, we're spending extensive amount of time on it, I assure you, and spent a lot of time today on it in providing information and negotiating with the county and the state on a solution. And certainly, we sympathize and want to solve the problem. We want to assure you on the temporary issue, their water is coming from the city. We've... City staff did do a temporary connection so they can truck it in, and so we set up a meter where they can do it. So we've already done some temporary things already with allowing them to buy bulk water from us, and so that's why they're getting water. So they're really using city water now. Certainly, it'd be the preference of the property owner to have a pipe, and certainly there's some complications there, and we need to work through the logistic issues as well as the territorial or the... Our availability, our ability to extend water outside our urban growth area.
Yeah, I think one of the confusing comments that was made tonight is it's not a short amount of pipe. The distance from our meter, which is on the church property on Heller Road, it would be from that down to Heller Road and then along the county right-of-way to the wagon wheel trailer park. So it's not inches. It's... It's... Yeah, it's a quarter of a mile at least. And we certainly have been talking with them. As a matter of fact, I was at the county in a meeting this afternoon that was not directly about wagon wheel, but we had some conversations even at that. So not only has our staff been working towards a solution, believe me, we have the compassion. We know and understand. We've just got to figure out the best way to get it done, and we're working on it, so...
I have a yes or no question for the city administrator.
Is this about wagon wheel?
Yes, it is.
City administrator?
City administrator? This is a yes or no question. Can the city unilaterally go in and hook up a line without working through the county or through the state?
No, we cannot.
Thank you.
I believe the word I was looking for earlier was jurisdictional issue, and we need the county and the state to help us with that.
Therefore, the pressure from that community, the wagon wheel community, should be very active with their landlord and with the county, correct?
Yes.
Do you happen to know if they've actually drilled exploratory wells in or around other property that that landlord has?
They have not.
Thank you.
They've tried... It's my understanding they drilled two wells on the existing site. I think they have neighboring property they have not drilled on, and I think...
I believe they tried to rehab the two existing wells. And they haven't... But they haven't done any explorer wells, but it was quite costly for them, and they weren't effective in rehabbing those two existing wells. And it just... It was kind of interesting. It's kind of perplexing to county staff. What's the position I'm looking at?
Doug Kelly, the hydrogeology.
Hydrogeology. Yeah, he was kind of baffled that it all of a sudden went dry. So it's just kind of an unfortunate event and something kind of strange, and we can't really explain how a drill... A well was working well for fifty years and then all of a sudden dried up.
Yeah, I can tell you the city staff is working daily, and more than one of the staff are working daily on finding solutions, so...
Okay, I have a couple other items.
Yes.
I just want to call your attention to the city clerk prepared, the upcoming important city council dates. And I think you're all aware of the change in June with two instead of the normal three meetings. Just want to call your attention to that. And then the AWC Annual Conference in Spokane, and I wanted to certainly call your attention to the last one in June, the twenty-ninth Windjammer Grand Opening. So any questions on any of those items? All right, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Brett Arvison to give possibly our last formal report, so...
I didn't realize it's a birthday, but we do have something to celebrate.
What are you handing me here?
You don't know?
Wash your hands.
It's called product.
That is so cool.
Time for our Clean Water Facility project update. And what I'm handing out is our dried bile solids. We were actually running our dryer last week. And so that is the product that's coming out of it. And it's not the Cheetos, it's more like Rice Krispies now.
Brett, is it this dry as it comes out, or is this a little extra dry?
No, that's actually as it comes out, so I had him go out and grab a bag. But anyway, we're getting it going. It's been a bit of a struggle, but we're moving along. Also, another thing we asked contestants this week is we actually started putting water through the water park. So this is our ship in the mass, and the mass actually have little jets in them, so we're actually running that. I do want to dispel rumor. There's been some recent social media posts that are saying we're using recycled water in the water park. No, we are using city drinking water with a legal cross connection. It's actually on a completely different meter system, so I hope people would hear this. This is the parking lot to the south area. We actually paved that, so that's where the old Wibby Bank Building used to be, and now it's our new parking lot. The area out in the plaza in the south area, we're pouring concrete like crazy. It's been a pour just about every day for the last two weeks, so that's coming along nicely. We're hoping to get most of the pouring done by the end of next week. The area out to the west has been pretty well leveled out, and they're starting to seed that areas. So hopefully, we get the grass going. It's been a little wet this week, but they're moving on it. One thing we've been doing a lot of is tours. This is a group that came by about a week before last. They... People called me up, and one of the ladies called me and asked for a tour, so she brought ten of her friends down, so they had a good time. I've had... Been doing those about once a week. Last week, we actually took two busloads of Hillcrest third graders through the tour, so it was kind of interesting. I can talk a little more about that in a second. We did have an unfortunate event last week as we had an odor event. We were actually testing the dryer, and we're doing it through operational testing. Some of that required us to disassemble parts on the odor control. So we did have some odor get out of the building. Unfortunately, that was right at the same time we had the third graders there, so I wish... Not sure which one was louder, the operators or the third graders, but we did have that. It's one time effect. Basically, we had to pull parts apart to test things and look at it. While the doors were open, our internal building suction pulled it outside. So we also had some partially cooked sludge that smelled worse than normal. So, but anyway, we did operate a Friday without major odors, and next week, when we run it, we're going to make sure that that problem's taken care of. But I do apologize to Hillcrest. Our splash park naming contest is underway. We actually have sent out cards to everybody, and we've... Last time I looked, we had Friday afternoon, we had about twenty-five contestants on that, so it is getting popular. I think we'll see a lot more as we move forward with it. Again, it's limited... This is wrong. It's limited to contestants under eighteen. We want a name that reflects Oak Harbor heritage, living in our city or our local environment. We are pulling together a selection committee on that, which will be judged on originality and creativity. So May second's the big date. Recent activities, we're continuing to run our plant successfully. Again, our treatment plant performance is excellent. Our SCADA system is getting pretty well perfected. Once we get the dryer up, we'll be pretty happy with it, but it's been an incredible tool. As I said, our soft dry is producing bile solids, and we're beginning punch list activities, so that's a big list of stuff we do, but it's the end of the end, or beginning to the end, I should say. So we're starting to wind down a little bit. Windjammer Park, we're completing the irrigation installation. Mostly, that's just headers and Roncay's domain systems in there, but as we start to find the grade, they adjust things. We are seeding the west side of the park, continuing planning activities. Hard scape paving is ongoing. Next big task, it's probably the last big task on the project, is we're starting the City Beach reconstruction, getting that complete. The west kitchen, east kitchen pavilion, I think we're going to have those pretty well knocked off by the end of this week or in next week, excuse me. And we are starting to commission the splash park. Budget-wise, we're still at one hundred and forty-nine million to one hundred and twenty-seven thousand for the contracted budget. Expended through the end of March is one hundred and forty-three million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand. We're down to five point two million remaining balance. Schedule highlights, as Blaine said, June twenty-ninth is our big opening, both for the Windjammer Park and the Splash Park, so we're getting real excited about that. This will be my last monthly status report for the project. It's been four years of them, so things are coming to conclusion. We'll be doing quite a bit of paperwork for next year, but active construction is coming close. Anyway, we're charging to get the rest of the park complete. If you want to find out about our project, you can reach us at oakharborcleanewater.org, and that's also where our contest for the splash park naming is located. You can call us at nine one four seven thousand or call our work extensions. You can email us at treatmentplant@oakharbor.org. And like I said, we are taking tours, so if somebody wants to gather group, I want to add, do ask if it's five or larger, five to ten. But we can schedule something, and like I say, we've had quite a few take advantage of that. Questions?
Any questions? Yes, Councilor Ombert?
Thank you, Mayor. Brett, I hope that you said this is... You meant this is the last scheduled report.
Right.
I hope we have a final closeout report.
Right.
At the end of this. Is that what your intentions were?
Yeah, we... I see. We were asked four years ago to provide monthly reports.
Right.
You know, actually, up until this year, we've actually had every council meeting. So we're going away from the regular status reports, but there will still be some reporting that takes place, you know, there are actions and that sort of thing. We still have a lot of projects close out there.
We're going to integrate some of the financial reports into my monthly report to the workshop.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
And we will continue the monthly reports that we've been preparing in your pack that they'll continue through July.
Yes, Councilor Shurdean.
I know the decision was made to relocate for the fourth, the equipment and carnival to down on Bay Shore. Are we still doing sod then, or is it...
Yeah, sod is actually being installed, was installed yesterday today.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Anyone else? So Brett, I thought I'd tell you, we had one of our employees who had a third grader here, and I did hear about the odor, but in spite of that, she said her son wants to go to work at the treatment plant when he grows up. And I thought, wow.
That was...
What success.
Excuse me, to give the operator some credit, you know, Cory, we cooked him the lab and showed him some bacteria. They liked, you know, the computer screens, you know, the kids like that. No, actually, I was quite impressed by the groups there. I'm having grandkids, but they were asking good questions and very science-oriented, so...
They were here in city hall also, I think, before they came down. So yes, they did make a little noise.
Yeah, I just... It was a bad day to have a bad odor. I wish I could give a little better first impression, but...
Well, thank you very much. Okay, we will move on now to our section six, public hearings and meetings. And there will be an opportunity after our presentations to speak during a scheduled public hearing or meeting. Please sign in, but if you don't, you'll still get an opportunity to talk. To ensure comments are recorded properly, please state your name clearly into the microphone, and please limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. So we'll start with now item number six. So, we'll start with now item number 6A, which has two parts, ordinance number 1871 and ordinance number 1872. So, we'll turn it over to Blaine O'Bourn.
Okay, both these ordinances are related to changing the funding name. I'll kind of go over overview here. The first ordinance is, we talked about this in the last workshop, we did go over the five goals there that'll be included into the ordinance goals, whereas before it was just for arts acquisition and maintenance. So, this really expands it. We did go ahead and implement one of the suggestions there, was to limit the name, or limit the reference to specific working with individual artists, but I think community-wise, it still fits really well. So, we went ahead and implemented that modification. And then, so the first ordinance is just the renaming, and the second ordinance is the way it allocates. So, we have to turn around and change the name. If we change the name of the fund in the first ordinance, then we got to change the name into where it's allocated to. The next ordinance allocates it to the Arts Commission and just changes it from the acquisition, Arts Acquisition and Maintenance to the Creative Arts Fund, and we believe that Creative Arts Fund has the flexibility and kind of is a overall definition that meets the goals of the Arts Commission. So, the next step is kind of what we're working towards here, some of the initiatives that with this name change will allow us to do, and we'll be coming back on the April 24th workshop for your input, are first, the creation of a sculpture park, and then second, seeking a creative art district designation to promote the creative arts industry, which is a very viable industry, and certainly, there's a great effort in doing that. I'll have a lot more discussion on that. You're not necessarily voting on these initiatives, but by expanding the name, it allows us to do it. And then, we still have some remaining cleanup on their base ordinance for the commission, and we'll implement one of the changes that came out of that ordinance to match what's in the fund ordinance. And then, we'll look at some other options there with possibly creating an ex officio council representative and some other cleanup house cleaning items. And then, with that, I would recommend that the council adopt ordinance 1871, aligning the goals of the Oak Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 3.6, with the goals and purposes of the Arts Commission statement, and renaming the fund, the Creative Arts Fund, and then move to adopt ordinance number 1872, allocating the utility tax to the newly created Creative Arts Fund. And I do have a representative from the Arts Commission, the chair, here to answer questions and also to provide support for this change. So, any questions?
Before we do that here, I'll see if anybody from the public would like to speak to this section. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it to council for questions or input. Yes, Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. The Arts Council has worked really hard for this city and a lot of projects that have been ongoing, and I remember last year, they were limited in their scope and what they were able to accomplish, and during our workshop, the case was made for these ordinances, and they make sense. They align with what the city would like to do with the hard work of the Arts Council. And so, if there are no further questions, I'd like to check with our city attorney. Do we have to make these motions separately? Okay.
Anyone else got any questions? Yes, Councilor Servatius.
Thank you. It doesn't necessarily pertain to what we're voting on, but as far as the arts district, do we have any geographic, is that going to be a geographically bounded area?
It will be, but there'll be a lot of public input on how we derive that boundary.
Okay.
So, there's a large process involved in that, and it's a good framework. So, it's kind of like a Main Street, where a Main Street has a boundary, that creative district will have a boundary too, and it makes sense to limit it and not just make it the whole city limits, to try to put it into an area that you want to drive some synergy.
Okay, thank you. Anyone question? Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 1871, aligning the goals of the OHMC, Chapter 3.26, with the goals and purposes in the Arts Commission mission statement, and renaming the fund, the Creative Arts Fund.
Second.
Okay, you've got a motion and a second that reads just like in the recommended action. There are no other questions or input. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. That motion was made by Councilor Larson and seconded by Mayor Protim. So, back to you, counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 1872, allocating the utility tax to the newly named Creative Arts Fund.
Second.
Okay, you've got a motion and a second. It reads exactly like the recommended action, motion by Counselor Larson, second by Mayor Protim. Seeing no other input or questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay. So, we will then move on to item number 6B, Resolution Number 19-10, adopting the 2019 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. And we have our senior planner, Kat Kimmack. Kat, welcome.
Members of the council, I don't have a presentation or anything to add to this discussion. This was an item that was introduced to the city council at the March 19th meeting. The council referred the item to the workshop on 27th. We had a discussion about adding the UGA, JPA boundaries to it. I think based on that discussion, we've added that item to the resolution coming forward, so we presented the new resolution with the packet. So, we have nothing to add from staff side, but any questions or comments, we'll be happy to address those.
Okay, let's make sure the public doesn't have any input or questions at this point. Open for public comment. Okay, seeing none, then we will back Kat. Take it to council here. Any questions or input? Yes, Councilor Servatius.
Thank you, Kat. I was happy to see that at the bottom of the resolution there. I'm looking at page 182 in our packet. Specifically, I'm talking to the UGA, JPA expansion talks, and keeping that a priority for those boundary line realignments, adjustments. Tell me about the priorities. A, I'm assuming there might be a B in there. C, how do we prioritize those?
So, good question. The docket process, and if you look at our code, we codified the process several years ago because we were allowed to amend our comprehensive plan only once a year. So, based on those criterias and the things that we've adopted, anything mandated, in the sense, you know, our 2016 update was a mandate, or a shoreline master program was a mandate. So, those are assigned priority A. Sponsored amendments, something that comes from a public, and there's a process on how that is established in our code as well, and that gets a priority B.
So, what might be an example of that?
Say, density change for a single family, and the public is driving a density change. We want to know first of all if there's adequate support behind that. So, there's a big process in our code for somebody in the public to go gather public support to introduce a amendment to the comprehensive plan, because comprehensive plan amendments impact the entire city, and so you shouldn't have necessarily one person and one person's interest driving the change to the plan. So, you want kind of an organized process when you're changing the plan for the city. So, we have a process outlined for that. So, we haven't had any that comes up, but that doesn't mean we won't have any in the future, but there is a way, a venue to do that. And everything else that is discretionary is basically priority C, just from a state mandated standpoint. It's not anything that we prioritize in terms of staff work program. That's how the code is just assigning priority to it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Heisen.
I move to approve Resolution 19-10, adopting the 2019 Comprehensive Planned Amendment Docket.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second that reads just like the suggested action in your packet, motion by Councilor Heisen, second by Councilor Larson. Seeing no other input or questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, we will move on to ordinances and resolutions. Section seven on the agenda, ordinance number 1873, rezoning parcels from R2 to R3. We have our Development Services Director, Mr. Powers, Steve Powers.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor noted, this is a rezoning application that's come before the city, so I just have a quick PowerPoint presentation that basically covers the high points of the agenda bill as well as the supporting materials which were attached to it. So, what we're dealing with here is a request to rezone approximately 3.3 acres from the current zoning of R2, which equates with our low-density residential designation, and that, under its current zoning, would allow up to 44 units. The proposed change would take it to R3, which, under our new process that we put in place in 2016, we were able to accomplish without having to go through the comprehensive plan amendment change. This is one of the streamlining approaches that staff proposed and the Planning Commission and council accepted. And so, the intended zoning for the parcels are R3, which, again, is in that same range of uses allowed under the low-density residential designation. And that new zoning category, if it's approved, would allow up to 60 units for the project. It is associated with the project, but if I look at the map behind Mr. O'Bourn, you can see the parcels are outlined in this pinkish color here. This is Fort Nugent Road. This is Ida Place here, and of course, SR 20 is over in this location. So, this came to the city by virtue of a pre-application process. We were working with a local land developer who wanted to propose a multifamily project. So, we worked with that applicant, as you saw in your staff reports, to minimize some of the impacts on surrounding properties. We helped them position different building heights in optimal locations, did some orientation changes to how the buildings would be located. The long and the short of it is, is that they've come back with a project which does need the additional zoning in order to achieve the 60 units, but we think that it's a design which is very appropriate for this particular location. Rezoning process itself, as you saw in your materials, require a hearing before the hearing examiner. That was conducted on March 26th with the decision by the city council. The application needs to meet the zoning criteria, rezoning criteria outlined in the code, and we've covered those for you in the planning, or the hearing examiner report. Certainly required public notice, which was provided. We did receive one written comment and one comment at the hearing itself. Hearing examiner conducted his hearing on March 26th and has recommended approval to city council, and as you saw from your materials, that's a closed record review, which I believe the city attorney will have some questions for you before we go too much further in this process. And then, there's a recommended action on the screen, but before, I think we have the council weigh in on these things, the city attorney has something that she needs to ask you about.
This is true. Since this is a quasi-judicial matter, we have to go through the appearance of fairness colloquy, so I'm going to ask you some questions, and if you could just respond yes or no. Does any member of this council have knowledge of or have conducted business with either the proponents or the opponents of this rezone?
No.
No.
Seeing none. Does any member of this council either have a pecuniary or nonpecuniary interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Does any member of this council know whether or not their employer has a financial interest in the property or area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding?
No.
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 Does any member of this council live or own property within 300 feet of the area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding?
No. No.
Does any member of this council have any special knowledge about the substance of the merits of this proceeding, which would or could cause the council member to prejudge the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
No.
Is there any member of this council who believes that he or she cannot sit impartially and hear this matter fairly and impartially, both as to the respective positions of the proponents and the opponents in this proceeding?
No.
No.
Has any council member had any ex-party contacts regarding this matter?
No.
No.
Is there any member of the audience who, because of the appearance of fairness doctrine, wishes to disqualify any member of the council from hearing this matter? Seeing none. I will point out that this is a closed record review, and so we generally shouldn't be taking public comment on a matter that has already been heard at the deciding body below. So, this is just for your consideration. We wouldn't normally take public comment on a closed record review.
And so, then I will conclude staff comments by noting the recommended action for you, which is to adopt ordinance 1873, which would rezone the parcels listed on the screen from R2, limited multiple-family residential, to R3, multiple-family residential. And that concludes the staff comments.
Any questions or input? Yes, Councilor Heisen.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1873 as presented.
Second.
Okay, got a motion to adopt ordinance number 1873 as presented, motion by Councilor Heisen, second by Councilor Ombur. Okay, seeing no other input or questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Okay, we will move on to section, item number 7B, Resolution 19-14, Arts Commission Event Funding Requests. Our city administrator back, Mr. O'Bourn.
Yeah, I get to come up here a few times tonight, so. Just to kind of give you a little history here, these are annual events, and I don't know in the past if they formally ask the commission, but we want to make sure, or the city council, we want to make sure we comply with the law and all expenditures of the Arts Commission funding. Now, the Creative Arts Fund have to be approved by the council, so they're asking for a little bit of money for the Driftwood Days, up to $1,000. We don't know if we'll spend that much, but we know we can only do it not to succeed, so that's what we estimated the max will be for supporting that event. And then, also, the music festival, it's my understanding the commission has done some participation in the past there and asking for $300, so $1,300 total, and it is in a resolution. These two events meet the goals of the Arts Commission, and I'm happy to go ahead and recommend them to you for passage of this resolution, which would authorize these expenditures.
Okay, before we do that, I guess we'll make sure the public doesn't have any input or questions, or, okay, seeing none, we will bring it to council. Counselor, Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Mr. O'Bourn, is this the first year that the Arts Commission is taking over sponsoring the Driftwood Days? I don't remember that they did it last year.
They didn't do it last year, but they've done it some years in the past for a number of years. They've done it. It's my understanding, I have to kind of rely upon other people that have the history here. They didn't pull it off last year, but they're planning on bringing it back and asking for...
Usually, they've asked the LTAC committee because they keep record of people bringing into town, and they've asked them for money to put on this event. Usually, the chairman have been Skip and Casey Patilla, so I don't recall the Art Commission doing this. It was always held on the same day as Military Appreciation on the beach, and then those participants would come up and have lunch, so...
They follow the tides, and so...
Yes.
The tides work on August 17th, and that's why they picked that date, August 17th for this year. So, I know they didn't do it last year. It's my understanding that they've done it for a number of years before that, so, and they have some volunteers and some people lined up to do that event. I'm sorry, I can't speak to your specific issue of whether LTAC was involved in the past.
Yes, Counselor Servatius.
I think they have. I know Nora O'Connell-Balda was very involved, and I was actually a judge several years, so they have been involved. I don't recall where the funding came from, but I know they've been involved with organizing it and putting it on, the Arts Commission. And I think they made requests to LTAC. I don't remember how that panned out, if that was my time as chair or not. I did have a question as far as the Arts Commission, or the Arts, we just renamed it, the Arts Fund. I think we could probably part with $1,300, but can we get a basic financial report? I don't know if Patricia's back there or not, but what do we have in the coffers?
I believe it's about $150,000 they have in a balance, and their revenue's about $50,000 a year.
Okay. It's up, that's good. I don't know if we have any major projects planned. I don't know if we have any major projects planned. It was like, I thought we were 32, 35, but if we're now up to 50, we're doing better.
They get a percentage of the utility taxes, and so when you raise the rates, so originally when it started allocating, it was around $25,000, but with the rates going up, it's on a percentage. So the amount of revenue goes up, and we put it in the budget. So we've got a lot of projects on the commission, and they're looking, this certainly will fit within their budget, and we're kind of looking at the fund balance and looking at their annual point. But it's really good when they can support the community, and this really isn't a major, neither one of these are really major expenditures, and so it might have been only in the $200 sundry items in the past for the Driftwood Days, from my understanding.
And so, I mean, I will support it. I was just curious to see where they were at overall totals. It's a very, if the public has not been down there, it's a very cool event to see what the community can come up with, with just what they find on the beach. It's a really neat event.
Counselor Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Servadia. Driftwood Days is one of my favorite things that we do in the city. It's really, really cool, and I'm happy that we're bringing it back this year. Mr. O'Bourn, you mentioned in your introduction that this was, I'm going to paraphrase, that the process of approving these expenditures is basically a housekeeping item, like they're using their own money, the Art Commission is using their own fund. They're just, the step of getting permission to do so is a formality? Like, what, can you clarify?
Yeah, I can elaborate on that. It's an advisory commission, so they're advising you to spend the money, but the way the ordinance is written, they have no authority to expend anything without approval of the council. So we're formally coming to council to spend that Creative Arts Fund money now, and we'll continue to do so. We may have a provision in the ordinance where there's a minimum amount. I think from a policy point of view, it makes sense to review that, and so past councils have wanted to be very involved and know what's being spent, and that's a way that we can be accountable, and you can get an idea of what projects they're working on and approve it by each, the merits of each individual project.
That makes sense. I know we're accustomed to having, you know, a $40,000 project put in front of us, but asking for a few hundred dollars to help do an event, that does seem a little micromanaging. I would definitely be in support of reviewing that language.
Yeah, typically, the mayor and I have the $30,000, but in this case, I cannot use it because all expenditures have to come through the council for that fund.
Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that.
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have not been to this event before. I'm going to support this because I plan on going to this one. I saw the pictures, and they look like it's a lot of fun and a very cool event. So I will support this. The only thing that I would ask is maybe at our next council meeting, if we could just get a basic accounting of where that fund sits right now, just so that we can have a bird's eye view. But for $1,300 for these two events, I'm certainly going to support that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Are there any other comments? I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 1914, authorizing the Arts Commission event funding requests for the Driftwood Days 2019 event and participation in the Oak Harbor Music Festival event.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. The motion is exactly like the recommended action in your packet. The motion is made by Mayor Protem, second by Counselor Omburg. Okay, seeing no other input or questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. O'Bourn. So I think now we are moving on to item number 9A, selection of a council member for the ad hoc Splash Park Naming Selection Committee. Yes, Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to withdraw my name for consideration from this prestigious committee, as I have a close personal relationship with three of the probable contestants.
Okay, duly, duly noted. Counselor Larson is withdrawing from item 9A. So Counselor Servadia.
I think we've narrowed it down to two, then. The way the chosey works is we have Weisner and Wassinger who are not here, so it's a tie. Who should we nominate? Does anyone want to do it? I would be happy to nominate. Tara, I know you've been involved.
I'd love to do it.
Second that.
And I wrote the meetings down. It was May 7th and something else.
It's right, I'm bringing it up right now. Actually, I have a calendar right past it, right? See, there it is. May 7th. So the individual would have to be available for all those dates. May 7th at 4:00 PM, May 14th at 4:00 PM, May 22nd, council workshop, and the June 4th council meeting.
Yeah, I checked those before the meeting, and I can do that.
Great.
So I'm, if you want an official, I move to nominate Councilmember Heisen for the ad hoc Splash Park Naming Selection Committee.
I preceded that motion with a second.
So we got a motion and a second to accept Counselor Heisen as the ad hoc Splash Park Naming Selection Committee counselor, okay? Yes, Counselor Heisen.
I just want some assurance that I won't get any blowback from the Larson household if one of their submissions is not selected.
I can only speak for myself.
I'll risk it, I'll risk it.
Okay, we have motion by Counselor Servadia, second by Counselor Omburg, seeing no further questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. That's great. Okay, now we are now planning to go to executive session, and the title is Acquisition of Real Estate RCW 42.30.110, Section 1B. And I don't know the time. 10 minutes? We can't do anything in 10 minutes. You think we can? 15 minutes, okay. At 7:32, we'll reconvene in 15 minutes. At 7:32, we'll reconvene in 15 minutes.